Public meetings order?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. One A roll call and possible action on excusing of any member of the absent body that's not here. Anybody that's not here?
Here.
Present.
Here.
Here.
Present.
Move to excuse absent members?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you. They're excused.
Do you item one B pledge and invocation by Luis?
Pledge allegiance to the flag and states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. Father, as the events of the day continue to unfold, we seek your clarity and your peace. We know you are with us and for us as we gather today to seek your counsel. Please guide us in the right direction, your direction, and allow us to make good decisions to benefit all concerned. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Luis. Item two, public testimony. Hilda, anybody sign up?
Yes, sir.
Great. Can we have the name?
Yes, Mr. Pedro Garcia. He's with the FAR Community Theater and he's gonna speak up, speak on agenda item eight C. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Welcome, sir.
Yeah, you can take that off for you. You're six feet away.
All right. Well, thank you very much. I'm glad to be here. My name is Pedro Garcia. I am the artistic director and interim CEO for the FAR Community Theater Company, not too far from here.
That's right.
Where dreams go far. And we are now going into our thirteenth year. We are very happy and pleased. And we are producing three to four main stage plays per year, each one of them taking about three months to see fruition, from selecting the play, to casting, to rehearsals, and then to productions. And we've had full houses at our small place and intimate, and actors love performing there and audiences like seeing us close up. And we want to continue, which we plan to, and we are also doing online virtual acting classes immediately during COVID. We were in production with our spring play. We had to postpone, and then we went into online classes, like a lot of people are doing online now, and we've had success with that. We have affordable classes for kids, teens, and adults. And we want to continue also presenting our plays to some of the new venues that are here in the city, like the Outdoor Empire Amphitheater, also the Pepe Salinas renewal of the building there, and the downtown, I mean, the Research and Learning Center in South FAR, as well as two other places, perhaps in the north as well. When our plays are performed, we can tour them out there as well. So I wanted to-
Mr. Garcia, your time is up.
It's okay. Good thing.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you all for your support and hope that we can count with your support again, and we will let all the Vidal County and all the other counties know that the FAR Community Theater Company is here for all of us. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you, sir. Don't go anywhere. Just so you know, the commission as a whole, and I'm sure the population as well at large, they love the arts, right? Just, you know, and you're right. We do have outdoor amphitheaters now here in downtown. There'll be one in the north side. There'll be one in the south side as well, and of course, we have the library in the south side, which you guys are welcome to use. And I hope you guys do use it because we do need to spread the arts, and it's specifically meant to benefit the public, so please utilize it.
Thank you. We certainly will, sir.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Public carers, three A. Hilda, anybody sign up? No public carers. Thank you. Four city management reports. We've come, a couple of brief reports for all American commissioners. Submission of sales tax collection report for August 2020. We are doing better than expected. We're at ninety-five point six seven percent collection rate, which is very well. Item four B, submission of sales tax collection report for September 2020. COVID's starting to hit. We are down two point two nine percent for the month compared to last year, but all cities are down this month. We are action number four. The good thing is, on the good month, we are still positive for the entire year of two point six eight. Our sales tax is still positive, so that's good. Couple more reports I have for you all. One, y'all know we've had Exella working in the background. That's our new building inspection module that's going online for the public. It's gonna have online access for contractors. They can see where they're at in the building process. They can see where, they can request permits. The public can request permits from their house. They don't have to come into City Hall anymore. We're set to go online hopefully November first. What I did want to tell the commission and all the citizens, we do have the new website, the new portal called buildingfart.com. We're gonna start pushing that out this week and next month to get the public to know what's going on. It's been about a little over a year and a half we've been implementing this, so it's something great for FAR that y'all give us the opportunity to implement here. So thank you.
Are you gonna have a link on the three one one app?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so they can go there as well?
They'll take it straight to the website and they can, from there, they have to sign up and get a username and password to log in, and they can get in through there.
And it's English and Spanish?
English and Spanish, yes, sir.
Okay, good.
And a hundred and fifty other, other- Languages, yes, sir.
All right.
Yeah. Our website was just updated this past week with that capability. So you can hit the corner and you can translate to whatever language is out there.
Very nice.
We're good. Yes, sir. Also, we're getting a couple of dry days, thank God, due to the rain, so we're doing some vector control starting tonight. I know we've got a lot of complaints on mosquitoes. We'll do it tonight. They'll do a new count Wednesday, and if it's needed, we'll continue Wednesday and Friday also. Same thing with potholes. This rain has taken a big toll on our streets. I know a lot of people are calling for potholes. We are going out there actively getting them fixed as fast as we can, so if anybody's got questions or concerns about potholes, please use the three one one app to call them in.
That's important because we can track it, right?
Yes, sir.
We know when somebody, when you guys say something about it or bring up a concern, it's not lost in the shuffle. It's actually documented. You get a response, and it keeps everybody involved on track to be sure something is addressed. So please use the app.
And more importantly, the citizen can track where it's at in the process also.
Good.
I want to bring up Lisa Salinas. Salinas, come on up. This is Lisa Castillo Salinas. This is her first day on the job. She is your new chamber president.
Oh, okay.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank y'all. I wanted to thank y'all for having me today and tell you a little bit about myself. I am a twenty-year veteran of helping businesses grow. Full disclosure, I like to succeed. I like to win, and I like to help businesses find that niche. I'm a mother of two, proudly love to serve our community, and deep desire to help businesses. That's it. Just happy to be here.
Great. Welcome.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
And one last thing I have. Gary, can you come up, please? As you know, Gary Rodriguez has played many roles here in the city. Director of FAR TV, media director, the voice of FAR. If y'all don't know-
That is another promotion, isn't it?
Yeah, it kinda, kinda is. He doesn't have to come to work anymore. He's finally decided to take the plunge and retire.
Really?
So the end of this month will be Gary's last, last days with the city, and we have a little gift for him. But we have one here and we'll give another one at the end of the month.
Thank you.
Can you read that inscription, please?
Let me read what it says. It says, "In appreciation of your loyal and dedicated years of service, you will always be the voice of FAR."
Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Wiley. Thank you, Mayor Commission. I, uh, thank you, everybody. Thank you. Mayor, I want to thank you for the relationship that you allowed me to build with you and the new commission when they came in.
Yes, sir.
I don't live in FAR, never have. I have family in FAR and from FAR, but I love this community as if it was, as if I did live here. Every day, I would come to work asking myself, what can I do to help the city of FAR get better? And, you know, through the All America City Award, and then we did the Landscape Partnership Project, and then the Tire Incentive Pilot Program. There's just so many things that FAR has taken the lead on throughout the valley, and it was because of great leaders like all of you, and all of you, and all of you, that we were, I guess, had the okay and the approval to try new things and try to make our community better. And hopefully, I'll still be around serving you in some house, some way. I do want to remain active. This is more of a medical issue. I had some neck injuries when I was in the Army, but, and I have to take care of that now, but I still want to be available to you as a resource whenever you need me. And God bless you, and God bless the city of FAR. Thank you, Mayor.
You know, Gary, we met in 2015.
Yes, sir.
First time.
I remember it quite well.
Yes, yes. And, you know, you asked what you could do for the city of FAR, and I told you, all you have to do is be yourself, do the best you can for this, on behalf of the city of FAR. Don't worry about the elected officials. You're here to serve them. Do them just, and you've actually exceeded that. You've done extremely well. I'm surprised you hear that you're gonna retire. I mean, and I understand, and I respect your judgment of why you're gonna be doing it. You'll be definitely missed. You know, you're definitely a great voice in the city of FAR. Everybody knows it. And you always have great energy, and you pick up a room really quick, and, you know, it's big shoes for somebody to fill in. But from my perspective, I want to let you know that you're absolutely always welcome to the city of FAR. You're the son of FAR, and congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Wiley.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Yes, sir, that's all I have.
Okay. Hilda, do you have that picture I gave you? The one we're gonna put up? Okay. In accordance with section five five one point zero seven one to five five one point zero eight seven of the Texas Government Code, the FAR Board of Commissioners hereby gives notice that it is convening an executive session to discuss the items listed in the public portion of the meeting agenda, the time now being four eleven. We're back. Five seventeen, we're back. From executive session, back to open session.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Back to consent agenda number five. All items on consent agenda routine, non-controversial, and can be enacted on one motion should you so choose.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Regular agenda six A, ordinance is a resolution. Consideration action, if any, on ordinance adopting approving budget year October, begin October first, 2020, and ending September thirtieth, 2021. Adoption on first reading. Staffs recommend approval of budget.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Six B, consideration action, if any, on ordinance to amend the FAR and police civil service classification and strength of force ordinance number oh twenty twenty dash twenty to create two budgeted positions at the rank of deputy chief in the police department, and one new entry level firefighter position in the FAR Department. Adoption on first reading. Yes, mayor commissioners, we want to create two new deputy chiefs positions. Also, we are reducing the, it's not in here, we are reducing the assistant chief in the police department by one, and also, we are adding this budget year one firefighter. For some reason, the shifts were unbalanced. They were lacking one in one shift. It makes them all balanced now.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you. Six C, consideration action, if any, on ordinance regulating electioneering in the city-owned and city-controlled properties. This is the second reading. Staffs recommend approval.
So moved. Second.
Do you have any commentary, Commissioner Wood?
Yes, Mayor. I have been contacted by several citizens in concern, you know, concern about this new resolution or ordinance regulating electioneering in our, in our city properties. The main reason and purpose of this resolution is basically to allow our citizens to have a better experience in, when they go and participate in the electoral process. It's been traditional, not only here in the city of FAR, but in many places around the valley, where people can approach the potential voter to, with the material, and a lot of these people feel intimidated. They feel uncomfortable. They don't want to be bothered. Well, with this resolution, we are going to make that experience better. They're not gonna be intimidated by anyone because they're not gonna have access to the persons who go to the polling locations. We are trying to increase the participation of our citizens, and this is one way to do it, by making the experience a less threatening in a sense, and more, just a better experience overall. So that is the main reason for this ordinance. It has nothing to do with anything else. I know we are in a very complex political climate in our, not only here, but in the country, but this has nothing to do with that. It has to do with us thinking about the political process and the participation of our citizens. We need to increase participation. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Commissioner, thank you for that. I also want to add, at a staff level, mayor commissioners, we did this ordinance to protect the public. We have a great safety concern, like Commissioner said, when you do show up to vote, people bombard your vehicle. They catch you when they're coming in. They catch you when you're driving in. We've had some near misses where people have almost been hit and run over. We wanted to eliminate that for the safety of the public, the people out there voting, and all of our residents.
Mayor, ma'am?
Yes, Commissioner?
Yes. Thank you. One more thing, Mayor. And we said it last time, we want to reemphasize it, and we are gonna go out with a campaign on the new ordinance, like we do all of them after this last reading. So the way this is gonna work is before people could get in the parking lot and give you paraphernalia, whatever it was, now they're gonna be limited to the sidewalk. You drive in, drive into a parking lot, that's considered the safe zone. The people can go to the sidewalk. If you so choose, you want to go talk to political candidates camp, you walk over to the sidewalk, get the paraphernalia, talk to them, then go vote. They can no longer walk into your truck inside the parking lots.
Got it. Are we gonna, this is for the entire city of FAR?
Yes, sir.
All voting sites?
All voting sites that we control.
So are we gonna make it easier for the, you know, this is new, so I think, I hope you guys are gonna mark the land so people will know. As a voter, as I'm coming through, I can see the visual barrier where I'm not supposed to be, you know, people aren't supposed to be bugging me. I can just go vote whatever I want, and I can see the limit, so people are, okay. So I want to be sure that we give them-
Yes, sir. So we're gonna do the same thing we did when we changed the signs, when we only allowed two three-by-three signs. We're gonna have paraphernalia ready. We're gonna meet with each camp that's coming in and make sure we have a one-on-one meeting with them also.
Great. So this is not a Republican conspiracy or Democratic conspiracy?
No, sir.
No conspiracy theory?
We're at a city level. We are nonpartisan.
Good. Any, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Six D, consideration action, if any, on resolution appointing, reappointing one member to civil service commission. Yes, sir, the term of Lola Rodriguez is up. She's asking to be reappointed.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Six E, consideration action, if any, on resolution requesting authorization from Texas dot to close US two D one from Cage Boulevard to Havelina Road to Juanba Y Road on Wednesday, November eleventh, 2020 for the Veterans Day fireworks display. Yes, sir, staff is recommended approval.
So moved. Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you. Six F, consideration action, if any, on resolution determining the public necessity to acquire certain real property, giving notice of an official determination to acquire real property for public purposes, establishing procedures for the acquisition of market value of the property to be acquired, and the recognition manager to designate, to communicate offers to owners for the purchase of the property, appropriate funds, unauthorized condemnation proceedings by city attorney contingent on available funding. Yes, sir, we talked about this in executive session. This is the piece of property we want to buy. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Six G, consideration action, if any, on resolution ratifying authorization to donate computer equipment at the first responder event. Yes, sir, we donated twenty computers for the public at large due to the COVID, so they can work at home, the students. It is a donation from the city, so I just need a resolution saying that.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Six H, consideration action, if any, adopting resolution to accept petitions for voluntary annexation, setting date, time, and place for public carers authorizing and directing publication of the notice of such public carrying and directing city manager to prepare service plan for approximately fifty-three acres of land, more or less located in the city of FAR ZTJ, FAR Dow County, Texas. Yes, sir, this is an annexation we're doing for a development. Staff is recommending approval. So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Six I, consideration action, if any, on resolution establishing the code of ethics for the board of commissioners. Yes, sir, as you know, we have been diligently working with the, with staff to attain the Balge Award. Part of the process is, we should have a board of ethics for boards and commissions, this, for the elected bodies and all the appointed boards you have. This is just closing that gap. We have it for staff. Now we need it just for the boards.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you. Seven A, consideration action, if any, on accepting, acceptance of counteroffer and offer for the property legally described as being fifteen point one one acre tract of land, more or less, out of lot three thirty-nine, and a six point one acre tract of land, more or less, out of lot three thirty-eight, Kelly Far subdivision FAR down in Dow County, Texas. Yes, sir, this is property we want to acquire for drainage purposes. As discussed in executive session, staff is recommending approval.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. Consideration, I'm sorry, seven B, consideration action, if any, authorizing Cox Con SA, the CV, in Canelo Civilis, to conduct field studies and conceptual plan phase three for the bridge expansion project, the twin bridge of the second span in Mexico. Yes, sir, this is an engineering firm out of Mexico that's gonna help us get our second span also. Staff is recommending approval.
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Seven C, consideration action, if any, on selecting various electrical firms to be part of the rotation list to provide citywide electrical on-call maintenance, on-call services and maintenance services. Yes, sir, we had five bidders that bid for this project. Three didn't bid properly. We have two left. Staff has to recommend approval of the two to create a list.
Okay. Do you have a motion? So moved? Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. One abstention.
Thank you. Seven D, consideration action on selecting various HVAC firms to be part of the rotation list to provide citywide HVAC on-call and maintenance services. Yes, sir, this is also the same thing. We had several bidders bid to qualify. We're recommending to create the list with two bidders. So moved.
Do you have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. One abstention.
Thank you. Seven E, consideration action, if any, to amend professional service rotation list for water and sewer projects. Yes, sir, throughout time, we have created these water and sewer and other projects rotation lists, just like we did before. Some firms did not get a chance to bid for whatever reason. They weren't, they weren't created at the time, or they missed the bidding, or whatever. It is a professional service, so we can accept new qualified applicants to the rotation list, and that's what we wish to do.
Okay.
Want you to approve? Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Seven F, consideration action, if any, to approve a memorandum of understanding between the city of FAR and the newly recognized majority bargaining agent for the city of FAR law enforcement officers to set the minimum qualifications, base pay, and other conditions pertaining to the newly created rank of deputy chief by separate ordinance. Yes, sir, mayor commissioners, as you know, we have a collective bargaining agreement with both our FIRE and police. In order to make the needed changes that we want to do in the police department, we needed to amend the ordinance. This is the memorandum of understanding signed by the association, given us the authority to do so. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? This is by both unions, is that what?
No, sir, just the lead union.
Just the lead union. Got it. Okay. Any further discussion? Otherwise, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Seven G, consideration action, if any, on proving budget for FAR Economic Development Corporation Two for fiscal year 2020, 2021. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you. Seven H, consideration action, if any, on approving budget for tax increment reinvestment zone number one for fiscal year 2020, 2021.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Seven I, consideration action, if any, on approval budget for tax increment reinvestment zone number two for fiscal year 2020, 2021.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you. Seven J, consideration action, if any, approving budget for FAR Housing Authority Finance Corporation fiscal year 2020, 2021. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Seven K, consideration action, if any, on proving budget for FAR Housing Finance Corporation Jackson Place Apartments fiscal year 2020, 2021.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you. Seven L, consideration action, if any, approving budget for FAR Greater Chamber Commerce fiscal year 2020, 2021.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you. Eight A, contracts and agreements, consideration action, if any, authorizing city manager to extend a supply contract with Rio Valley Pipe LLC, DBA Kappa for the purchase and delivery of RCP manholes and inlets. Yes, sir, this is a one-year extension at the same current prices.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you. Eight B, consideration action, if any, authorizing city manager to extend a supply contract with Chemtrade Chemicals US LLC for the purchase and delivery of aluminum sulfide liquid polymer blend and aluminum, sodium sulfide. This is also a one-year extension, keeping the current prices.
Approve. Second.
Are you building a rocket, or what's this for, man?
For the, for the water and sewer plants.
Ah, okay. Any, any discussion? Otherwise, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you. Eight C, consideration action, if any, on agreement with Texas City FAR and FAR Community Theater fiscal year 2020, 2021. Yes, sir, our current agreement, we do give them thirty-five thousand dollars for operations. This is for next year's budget. Staff is recommending approval.
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you. Eight D, consideration action, if any, authorizing city manager to enter into a project utility adjustment agreement with design-built contractor Dragos Poolis.
Ah, yeah.
Joint venture for the I-two, I-sixty-nine interchange project. Yes, sir, there's, are some conflicts of our utilities in, in the new right-of-way that Texas dot has. This is a hundred percent. They're gonna move the lines, and they're gonna pay for it.
This is for the two eighty-one exchange expansion, right?
Yes, sir.
That's what this is.
Go to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Eight D, consideration action, if any, on First Amendment to our local agreement with Dow County in relation to the CARES Act funds. Yes, sir, the current agreement we had expired August thirty-first. This new agreement takes us to October thirty-first, 2020. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Eight F, consideration action, if any, authorizing city FAR police department to provide traffic control for the I-two, I-sixty-nine C interchange Project involving Dragos USA Inc. and Poolis Construction Inc. Yes, sir, this is an agreement between the city of FAR and the construction company. We're best suited to manage their, their emergency and their traffic control with our staff. This is off-duty employment for the city of FAR. They do cover all the insurances. Staff is recommending approval.
Move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Eight G, consideration action, if any, authorizing city manager to submit application for presidential permit for the FAR Air National Bridge Expansion Project.
So moved. Second.
All, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you. Eight H, consideration action, if any, authorizing city manager to negotiate and enter into a contract for project management services for the Texas Water Development Board funding projects. Yes, sir, we want to use our rotation list to get a project manager for the thirty-eight million dollars that we've incurred from Texas Water Development Board.
Want you to approve?
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. It passes.
9A's.
I'm sorry, before you continue, where's our, where's HR? Is she with me?
Right there.
Oh, can you come to the podium? I forgot to ask you something. And, oh, make sure you bring up the grant and stuff for the water.
For firefighters?
No, for the water projects that we inform the public about.
The Texas Water Development Board, thirty-eight million dollars or so. We did that already.
Okay, so I'm sure, we had done that. Hi.
Hello.
It just occurred to me, because I looked up the audience, so we've had some movement in public works, and I was asked about this, and we moved some people around. So those people, whenever we do that, it, because I don't, I don't want any misunderstandings from the employees that they get moved around. They step in to help the city out. Now, number one, it's, it's my understanding, they're, they're as temporary interim, and then we're gonna go out and make sure we publicize all those positions that were shifted around.
Correct.
And then we pick, you're gonna pick, recommend to Wiley the best candidates, is that right?
Normally, they place them on interim.
Yes.